Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of October 20th, 2025. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city councils as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item shall come forward after the clerk reads that item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date or plan for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting of Monday, October 20th, 2025, is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairperson Carlson, and good afternoon, members of the city council. It's really a pleasure to be back here once again to present the Mayor's Award of Excellence this time for April of 2025. And today, we are presenting to Investigator John Rennerfeldt of the Lincoln Police Department. Investigator Rennerfeldt was nominated in the category of safety by Sergeant Wendy Ground, and she did this in order to honor his outstanding investigative work for two different shooting incidents in the rail yard. His efforts led to multiple felony arrests and reinforced the city's commitment to fighting serious crime and keeping everyone in our community safe. These incidents, which occurred in 2023 and 2024, affected both individuals and local businesses. In both cases, obtaining information from those involved proved incredibly difficult, adding to the complexity of the investigations. Investigator Rennerfeldt, however, was undeterred by these challenges. He conducted thorough scene investigations, gathered key evidence, reviewed extensive video footage, and collaborated intensively with partner agencies, including the Omaha Police Department, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and LPD's own crime scene investigators and gang unit. As part of his investigation into the first incident, Investigator Rennerfeldt drafted 25 legal documents, including eight search and arrest warrants. Ultimately, his efforts helped secure seven felony arrests of three different individuals. Two of them are currently serving prison sentences, and a third is awaiting trial. In the second incident, the following year, Investigator Rennerfeldt once again demonstrated his skill by quickly identifying a suspect vehicle and uncovering vital evidence. His work led to three additional arrests for a total of four felonies. In her nomination letter, Detective Ground wrote, quote, "Investigator Rennerfeldt's work on these cases has been paramount in sending the message that those who wish to commit crimes in the city of Lincoln will be apprehended and held accountable." That is exactly the message that Investigator Rennerfeldt's skilled, determined investigative work has sent and will continue to send, and that's why I'm so pleased to present him with the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Mr. Chairperson.
AC Stilly is going to come up and say a few words.
Jason Stilly, Assistant Chief, Lincoln Police Department. It's my job today to thank the council and the mayor for honoring him at a council meeting, but it's also my job to embarrass John just a little bit. So, John Rennerfeldt is a fantastic investigator. There's a couple of things that really strike me about him that contribute to the good work that he does. First off is his technical skill. So, the mayor mentioned CSI work. Now, most of you know CSI from the TV show, and it's kind of like that, other than we're calling them out at all hours of the day, all days of the week, to go to the most heinous crime scenes that you can imagine, to locate evidence, to document evidence, to catalog it, and ultimately testify to it. So, he is very technically skilled. He is a tenacious investigator. I think his team would say that, once he latches on to something, that, once he gets his hooks in a case, he goes until all rocks are overturned, all clues are determined, and he investigates cases to a logical conclusion. But most importantly, is his empathy and compassion. And so, it strikes me that one of the things he's nominated for is customer relations. So, if you look at law enforcement, if you look at the history of law enforcement, we get our authority from the public. They give us the authority to go out and do the things that we do. They are our customers, they are our bosses, and I know that strikes and rings true with all of you, because they're all of your bosses. So, they demand us to do our jobs, and more importantly, they depend on us, but really, it's what they deserve, right? And so, John is very empathetic and customer service oriented. When he investigates all these cases, he investigates it like it's a member of his own family. So, through tenacity, dogged determination, and empathy, it makes John a perfect recipe for a perfect investigator, and I want to congratulate him on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and the citizens.
Thanks, sir.
Would you like to say a few words, Investigator Rennerfeldt?
I try not to, but I'll say a few. This wasn't a one-man show. As you clearly read, I have my team here that also helped. I did not analyze the phone data that came in. I need to give a shout out to Chris Fields, he's a genius when it comes to that. He helped me out, put people in the right locations, working with the Omaha Police Gang Unit, our gang unit, Douglas County. It was just a collaboration of everybody's knowledge and experience that led to some good arrests, and four convictions so far and one pending, so. It was a good deal.
Thank you, and thank you to your team. I know your family couldn't be here today, but you've got your LPD family here today, so we thank all of you for your incredible service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward with the agenda.
Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
Do we have any staff reports on consent agenda items? Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on any of the consent agenda items? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
Bowers. We can vote on these items.
Yes.
Beckius. I'll call Item 1A, reappointing Amber Pace, Isaac Rimbold, and Cody Schaff to the Veterans'
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda. Memorial Garden Advisory Council for terms to expire November 1st of 2028, introduced We shall move on to Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll call Item 4A and 4B together. Item 4A and B is Application of Val Limited Doing Business as Lincoln Station Great Hall by Bowers.
So moved.
for Class C K Liquor License Located at 201 North 7th Street, Suite 100, and the Related Second.
Second by Washington, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Manager Application of Anthony Messineo.
All right, welcome.
Bowers.
Yes.
Bowers.
Come on up, yeah.
Yes.
There's two mics either side.
Washington.
Yes.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Duden.
Anthony Messineo.
Yes.
Welcome.
Schob.
Can you tell us about your application a little bit?
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Carlson.
And I'm sorry, we'll start naming address.
Yes.
Sure.
Motion carried 7-0.
Anthony Messineo, 7535 Southampton Road, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Item 1B is approving the 2025-26 Joint Budget Committee Nonprofit Childcare Assistance Funding
And the reason for this is Val Limited is our main corporate entity, and back years
Recommendations, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
ago, when we started Premier Catering, it had its own corporation.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob.
That since has not been used, so we wanted to move the Premier Catering, you know, under
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Val Limited Doing Businesses Premier Catering under our Premier Catering license, and then
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is Investment Activity Report for Quarter Ending August 31st of 2025, introduced
adding myself as the manager of that. We have somebody retiring, so I'm taking over that role.
by Duden.
So moved. Great.
Second.
Any questions?
Second, Washington, discussion? Any questions, council? Seeing none, please call the roll. I don't see any.
Schob.
Appreciate you coming down.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Duden.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sir, any member of the public like to comment on this?
Washington.
If so, please come up now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
I'll call Item 4C and 4D together.
Yes.
Item 4C and D is Application of Friti Lu LLC Doing Business as Cuba Unfriti Lu for Class Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
C Liquor License Located at 915 North 27th Street, and the Related Manager Application Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda. of Victorino Gonzalez.
All right, welcome.
We shall move on to Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions.
Welcome.
I'll call Item 4A and 4B together.
You can state your name and then address, and then tell us a little bit about your
Item 4A and B is Application of Val Limited Doing Business as Lincoln Station Great Hall for a Class C K Liquor License Located at 201 North 7th Street, Suite 100, and the Related
application.
My name is Natalie Aguilar, and the address where the location is going to be is 915
Manager Application of Anthony Messineo.
All right, welcome.
North 27th Street, and currently, right now, we're an ice cream shop wanting to expand
Come on up, yeah. There's two mics either side.
Good afternoon, everybody.
to a restaurant, wanting to integrate, like, new Cuban cuisine and, like, different type
Anthony Messineo.
Welcome. Can you tell us about your application a little bit? And I'm sorry, we'll start naming address.
of foods, so we are just wanting to include that bar service into the restaurant, basically.
Sure. Anthony Messineo, 7535 Southampton Road, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Great.
And the reason for this is Val Limited is our main corporate entity, and back years
Counsel, do we have questions? All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Good job. ago, when we started Premier Catering, it had its own corporation.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can go ahead and proceed.
That since has not been used, so we wanted to move the Premier Catering, you know, under
Mr. Chair, since no one else is coming forward this time, I would like to put forward a motion that we approve Items 4A through 4D.
Val Limited Doing Businesses Premier Catering under our Premier Catering license, and then
Second. Second by Councilman Weber, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
adding myself as the manager of that.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
We have somebody retiring, so I'm taking over that role.
Schob.
Yes.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions, council? I don't see any. Appreciate you coming down.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Sir, any member of the public like to comment on this? If so, please come up now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
I'll call Item 4C and 4D together. Item 4C and D is Application of Friti Lu LLC Doing Business as Cuba Unfriti Lu for a Class C Liquor License Located at 915 North 27th Street, and the Related Manager Application of Victorino Gonzalez.
All right, welcome. Welcome. You can state your name and then address, and then tell us a little bit about your application.
My name is Natalie Aguilar, and the address where the location is going to be is 915 North 27th Street, and currently, right now, we're an ice cream shop wanting to expand to a restaurant, wanting to integrate, like, new Cuban cuisine and, like, different type of foods, so we are just wanting to include that bar service into the restaurant, basically.
Great. Counsel, do we have questions? All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Good job.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Chair, since no one else is coming forward this time, I would like to put forward a motion that we approve Items 4A through 4D.
Second. Second by Councilman Weber, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll call Item 4A and 4B together. Item 4A and B is Application of Val Limited Doing Business as Lincoln Station Great Hall for a Class C K Liquor License Located at 201 North 7th Street, Suite 100, and the Related Manager Application of Anthony Messineo.
All right, welcome. Come on up, yeah. There's two mics either side.
Good afternoon, everybody. Anthony Messineo.
Welcome. Can you tell us about your application a little bit? And I'm sorry, we'll start naming address.
Sure. Anthony Messineo, 7535 Southampton Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. And the reason for this is Val Limited is our main corporate entity, and back years ago, when we started Premier Catering, it had its own corporation. That since has not been used, so we wanted to move the Premier Catering, you know, under Val Limited Doing Businesses Premier Catering under our Premier Catering license, and then adding myself as the manager of that. We have somebody retiring, so I'm taking over that role.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions, council? I don't see any. Appreciate you coming down.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Sir, any member of the public like to comment on this? If so, please come up now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
I'll call Item 4C and 4D together. Item 4C and D is Application of Friti Lu LLC Doing Business as Cuba Unfriti Lu for a Class C Liquor License Located at 915 North 27th Street, and the Related Manager Application of Victorino Gonzalez.
All right, welcome. You can state your name and then address, and then tell us a little bit about your application.
My name is Natalie Aguilar, and the address where the location is going to be is 915 North 27th Street, and currently, right now, we're an ice cream shop wanting to expand to a restaurant, wanting to integrate, like, new Cuban cuisine and, like, different type of foods, so we are just wanting to include that bar service into the restaurant, basically.
Great. Counsel, do we have questions? All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Good job.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Chair, since no one else is coming forward this time, I would like to put forward a motion that we approve Items 4A through 4D.
Second. Second by Councilman Weber, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 5, our Public Hearing Resolution. I'll go ahead and read Item 5A. Item 5A is Accepting and Improving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for September 16th through September 30th of 2025.
All right, is there anyone who would like to discuss claims against the city? If so, please come forward now. Again, anyone to discuss claims against the city, please come forward. Seeing none, we can proceed.
We can now vote on this item. Item 5A is Accepting and Improving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for September 16th through September 30th of 2025, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Duden, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes Section 5 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 6, Public Hearing Ordinances, Second Reading, and Related Resolutions. I'll call Item 6A. Item 6A is Amending the Pay Schedule for the Employee Group Whose Classifications Are Assigned to the Pay Range Prefect by the Letter W by Creating the Classification Dentist.
Good afternoon. Nicole Gross, Human Resources, 555 South 10th Street. This item is for the Health Department. The Health Department currently contracts dentists at their dentist clinic. They've struggled to recruit and retain the dentist, and so, they are requesting to create this classification to have a permanent dentist to assure daily clinic coverage. The salary was set at our highest rate of pay available, this is based on market data, and it was approved in the department's budget.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. I apologize. I know that we don't have a representative from Health here today. Do you happen to know, however, in the analyzing of this classification and this new job, how this relates in terms of what the Health Department's spending currently on outsourcing this work, and if there's any financial benefit one way or not, in terms of hiring an employee directly beyond the ability to have a standard of care that's continuous?
I believe that they believe that this would be consistent with what they've been paying.
Okay.
And possibly less.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilman Duden.
Tell me, what is the salary?
The salary is $142,000 to $206,000. That's our highest salary level at the city. It's actually a little below what market would dictate, so we're starting with this for now. If the department struggles, they're going to come back to us, and we're going to possibly create a new pay range for this, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington.
I really, I feel for the Health Department in trying to keep this service available to our citizens, and so, I'm glad that our residents, I'm really glad that they've put out the job for hire. I guess I'm sort of curious if they need to come back. Is there a chance that we could also, as a city, be thinking about student loan, something that maybe isn't directly salary, but I can understand why, maybe someone just coming out of dental school would have some loans that...
Yes, I think there are strategies that we could help the Health Department address if it comes to that, yes.
All right, well, cross our fingers.
Well, and just to respond to Councilman Washington's about student loan forgiveness, this would qualify, I believe, under the public service loan forgiveness with the federal government of 10 years of continuous service with a nonprofit or governmental organization. Now, I don't know where those, like, standards stand at now, you know what I mean? But I believe it does count under that.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Sir, any member of the public like to comment on this? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
I'll call Item 6B. Item 6B is Amending the Pay Schedule for the Employee Group Whose Classifications Are Assigned to the Pay Range Prefect by the Letter C by Creating the Classification Senior Community Outreach Specialist.
The Health Department is requesting to create this classification to help with community outreach within the Healthy Families America Program. The position will provide leadership and mentoring to the Community Outreach Specialists and better align with program needs. The department will be reallocating a vacant senior public health nurse position to this, so it will be a cost savings.
All right, questions? I don't think we have any. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call Item 6C, Amending the Pay Schedule for the Employee Group Whose Classifications Are Assigned to the Pay Range Prefect by the Letter W by Deleting the Classification for Chief Information Officer.
This classification will no longer be needed, as IAS is becoming its own department, and a director classification has been created, so we're cleaning up our classification system and pay plan by deleting this.
All right, any questions? I appreciate it, thank you. Any members of the public like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll read Item 6D. Item 6D is Amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.76.130, Compensation Plan, Position and Pay Range Allocation, to add that when a classification prefect by A, C, or N is reallocated to a higher pay range, an employee will continue to serve the remainder of their promotion probation or probationary period in the higher pay range. By amending Section 2.76.135, Compensation Plan, Merit Pay Plan Established to amend the percentage rates for merit pay. By amending Section 2.76.153, Compensation Plan, Merit Pay Plan, Shift Differential to remove the B classification from the table for shift differential pay amounts, and increase shift differential pay for C and N classifications. By amending Section 2.76.200, Compensation Plan, Temporary Assignment or Project Leader to reduce the minimum hours for payment from eight hours to six hours for the N classification. By amending Section 2.76.380, Sick Leave With Pay, to clarify sick leave with pay for each classification, providing that accumulated sick leave earnings shall be computed only for hours when an eligible employee is in pay status based off of a 40-hour work week, and providing that upon retirement or death of an employee prefect by F, the employee or employees beneficiary shall be paid 60% of the employee's accumulated sick leave at the employee's regular pay at the time of retirement or death. By amending Section 2.76.395, Vacation Leave With Pay, to include hourly rate of vacation accrual for employees with a pay range prefect by the letters N and P. By amending Section 2.76.400, Leaves of Absence Without Pay, to include unauthorized absences and job abandonment conditions, to clarify leave of absences without pay and to include provisions for education and travel leave, and by repealing Section 2.76.405.
All right, welcome.
Angela Scriven, City Human Resources, 555 South 10th Street. So, this body of code changes, this is to reflect our recent labor negotiations for multiple labor contracts. We are updating code to match those, because code represents the probationary employees hired into those classifications that will hopefully, upon successful completion of probation, of course, be covered by those labor contracts.
Great. Questions, council? Thank you, appreciate it. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
That concludes Section 6 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 7, Ordinances, Third Reading, and Related Resolutions. I'll call Item 7A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25005, Application of the City of Lincoln, Lancaster County Planning Department to amend the 2050 Lincoln, Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to revise the priority growth areas and future service limit on property generally located at West Pioneers Boulevard and South Folsom Street. Revisions include changing designations of LPS property near Southwest 9th and West Pioneers from Tier 2 to Tier 1 Priority A, and changing designation of two parcels south of West Pioneers Boulevard from Tier 1 Priority C to Tier 1 Priority A. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob. Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7B is Annexation 25005, Application of Lincoln Public Schools to Annex Approximately 67.5 Acres, a property generally located at the northwest corner and southwest corner of South Folsom Street and West Pioneers Boulevard. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C is Annexation 25007, Application of Straska Lewis LLC to Annex Approximately 0.54 Acres, a property generally located at West Avalanche Road and West Bear Tooth Drive. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D is Change of Zone 25021, Application of Straska Lewis LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential, a property generally located at West Avalanche Road and West Bear Tooth Drive. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7E is Appeal of Denial of Request for Deviation from Access Management Policy Requirements for the property generally located at, on the southwest corner of Northwest 13th Street and West Fletcher Avenue. Introduced by Beckius.
Move approval with modifications.
Second.
Second.
Second by by Duden.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
Just as a reminder to my fellow council members, the motion to approve with modifications changes the deviation to reduce the turn lane length to 200 feet plus a 50-foot taper.
All right, any discussion?
Just so the public's aware, the the rules for this is that it should be 300 feet, and so we're we're proposing a slightly shorter distance, but not what the applicant was looking for. I think the applicant was looking for 150 foot.
Any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7F is Use Permit 04004A, Application of Highland Townhomes LLC to amend the existing use permit to develop 3.45 acres outlot for 72 multifamily units with associated waivers on the property generally located at Northwest 13th Street and West Fletcher Avenue. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7G is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 25009, declaring an area measuring approximately 0.70 acres, a city-owned property generally located at Northwest 12th Street and West Fletcher Avenue as surplus. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7H is Change of Zone 25013, Application of Highland Townhomes LLC to change the zoning designations on approximately, approximately 0.70 acres from P Public to O3 Office Park District, and on approximately 0.03 acres from O3 Office Park District to P Public on the property generally located at Northwest 13th Street and West Fletcher Avenue. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7I is approving the Real Estate Exchange Agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Parks and Recreation Department and Highlands Townhomes LLC for the property generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Northwest 20th Street and West Fletcher Avenue. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Beckius first.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Carlson. Just want to take a moment to thank the developer, thank Lincoln Parks and Rec, and thank the planning department in order to add more density to this site, and for the flexibility of the city departments to allow for detention to be reoriented, to take advantage of existing city property to move that detention to to that area and help create a denser product here as we continue to move towards trying to find more opportunities to provide housing in the city. Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington.
I wanted to take just a slight different tack, the thanks, though, is the same. I'd like to thank the developer, Parks and Rec, and certainly in planning and urban development, because this was creativity and action. Really appreciate all the departments working together to help the developer find a solution to improve the number of housings, or to increase the number of houses we have here in Lincoln, so, good job.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes Section 7. Section 8 is Resolutions First Readings, our Items 8A through 8I. Section 9 is Ordinances First Reading and Related Resolutions, our Items 9A through 9D. And Section 10 is our Pending List, Items 10A through 10C.
All right, our next item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda, not plan to appear on a future agenda, may do so at the open microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. For the month of October, open microphone sessions will be held on October 20th and October 27th. Today's October 20th. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now.
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Helm. I identify with the pronouns of he and him. I reside at 2750 South 13th Street, which is on Oto, Missouri land. We live in a time now where turmoil is constantly surrounding us, and we've somewhat gone, at